No, it was.
Oh, that's good. Was Van Dorn still there?
Yeah.
I don't know why I'm. Okay. Van Dorn's, but.
Sixteen to five thousand.
Never had some guy.
Um, I only make this light on. No. All right. It is now six o'clock. We will now begin our Adrian City Commission work study session for November seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. We do not have Robin at this time. She's getting ready for the election. So the administrator will administer the roll call.
Mary.
President.
Mr. Howl.
President.
Mr. Robert.
President.
Mr. Miller.
President.
Mr. Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Calvert.
Present.
Mr. Gao.
Present.
All members present.
At this time, I will turn it over to our city administrator Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. So we only have one scheduled item on the agenda tonight, which is a discussion of recreation. May drift a little bit into parks too, but here to lead that discussion is our personal creation director Jeremiah Davies. Luckily, he's been with the city just about one year, but now. Kind of the check in in one year, particular attention, like I say, on recreation, what's working, what might be tweaking and where we're going. Looking forward. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Jeremiah.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Like you said, it's still a bit of my thunder there. It'll be one year tomorrow. So happy to be here working for the city. It's been a fantastic year. Learned lots. Kind of excited to see where we're going. Just in a conversation, the way this kind of came about one, haven't seen you guys in a while, so I figured I'd come see you. But also there was a couple of topics that Greg and I have been talking about, and I decided to kind of prove that it would be good to come and touch base with you guys. There's so much, the handful of meetings that I've had prior with you all have been really focused on the parks. That's why I wanted to kind of just come tonight, give you a bit of a refresher, let you know what we think's working, what's not working, where we want to go, and obviously get your input. So just to kind of refresh your memory, we entered about four years ago into an agreement with Adrian Public Schools to partner with them to do recreation and what that looks like. It's a thirty, we committed to thirty thousand dollars per year. That covers equipment, operating supplies, site supervisors coaching, all those types of things. And how the program run in its current state, when it comes to money that goes to the district, I see all invoices, anything that comes in, I look it over, make sure it's up to up to snuff, which it always is, and process those. As part of this initiative, obviously, we give the the school district first rights to our fields, soccer fields, baseball, softball, cross-country, they use the trails heavily, which is just a smooth, a smooth partnership, something that's going on really before me. So we just want to highlight it continually. One of the good things that we, that's going on now, it's collaborative programming that goes on between myself, Chad O'Brien, the athletic director at Adrian High School, and they just hired a new intern rep coordinator, Toby, and so when it comes to all programming, we meet collaboratively, plan out the next six months, and kind of put those plans into operations. Super successful as of right now. They are now offering year-round program. So I highlighted a lot of stuff. There's football, basketball, gymnastics, swimming, tennis, track, cross-country, lacrosse, volleyball, golf, soccer, every sport that you can imagine is now being offered year-round for city resident kids and also kids that go to Adrian Public Schools.
What makes that?
Uh, that's kindergarten through sixth grade. We have some programs just due to their makeup where we do go to eighth grade, but the majority of it is K through six. Um, just in a recent update, this fall, that upwards of a little over two hundred and fifty kids involved in recreation and public school this fall. Again, numbers continue to increase, which we love to see. And one of the things that's exciting about that and why it seems there's high numbers is when we create this program, it's extremely affordable price, anywhere from twenty to twenty-five dollars per program. But the great thing about that, if a student, city resident family cannot afford that, no student has ever turned away. There's an established scholarship program at the school district, plenty of money, folks continue to donate to that. So again, any student, any city resident that wants to participate in really what I would consider high-quality recreational athletics or sports can do that. A reminder, it's open to all APS students and city residents. So there are those situations, when I was still at the district, where we had students who were city of Adrian residents, but chose to go to another school, still could participate in our programs, and we didn't see that happen. Doesn't happen often, but it is there. And going forward, this is kind of where this all started, just Greg and I talking that we would like to get a written agreement between ourselves and the and the school district, one is to have clear expectations, what's required of us, also what's required of the district. Uh, but again, positive things on Adrian Public Schools, and real quick, he's on Zoom. Chad O'Brien is the new athletic director at Adrian High School. Him and I have been working hand in hand, essentially for the last year in the transition from me leaving, two coming to the city. So Chad, real quick, can you jump on?
Yeah, I'm here.
You wanted to share your thoughts and then how this has gone, how this is affecting what you're seeing major public schools?
Sure, yeah. So I'm not quite to the one year. I actually officially came in at Adrian Public Schools on eleven twenty-two. So Jeremiah beat me on the one-year anniversary, but I'll be here for the for the full year coming up here towards the end of November. So in that time, we've transitioned kind of the department as a whole, at one time, it reported to the superintendent. And now with the new transition of losing a rec director, actually losing two since I've been here, and forming a new kind of position, if you will, with that, it now reports through athletics, which I think gives it a huge advantage of being on the same page, right, knowing what's going on and kind of supporting our system. So we do have just, you know, some things from the fall that Jeremiah talked about, you know, third and fourth grade flag football, we had forty-eight, and we ran that completely in-house. We did not run no league outside. Everybody played right here between the high school and Springbrook Middle School. So forty-eight APS kids, actually, some of them weren't APS kids, but they lived in the district, had the opportunity to play flag football. And then five, six, we had thirty-eight kids on the team. We actually ran a volleyball league this year for the first time, and we had third, fourth, and fifth, sixth were the two levels, if you will, and we had forty-six girls involved in that. So that was a huge advantage that we're actually talking about running that in the spring and running it with a boys' element also, because quite a few young men have come up and asked about volleyball that way, too. So that's another program we would expand, right? Run Club is still a big thing. We had fifty, fifty-six kids in the Run Club for the fall, and then we did Fall Softball, which had eleven students in it. Cheerleading's done some clinics. They had twenty-four in the fall, and then we are bringing back the Adrian Extreme Soccer Team to just make it a little bit more affordable for our kids. I know FCA kind of went away, and they started Lenaway FC, and it was pretty pricey. So we brought back the Adrian Extreme, and we had fifteen kids involved in this fall in the Adrian Extreme. So I think moving forward, having the department kind of more cohesive with the athletic department has been huge. Jeremiah and I have really kind of partnered to make sure that things were kind of streamlined and what made sense for both, right? And so there's nothing that goes on in rec that we don't talk about first, which is obviously with him having been in this position, that helps me a ton. And then we did just hire Toby as our coordinator of strength development and recreation here for APS. So it's a full-time, he's no longer an interim. And the district feels like the rec is supporting us so well right now that we're actually restructuring, and we're going to hire a assistant for Toby to help him out with rec and strength. So obviously, the district is committed to that because you're adding on that expense, you know, of bringing in another person to help run it, but the numbers dictate it, you know? I don't know how much it really affects for the city council, but for me, it's huge because, you know, you look at our numbers in sports across the board at the high school, middle school level, they're up drastically, you know? Wrestling had a meeting today, their first practice is next week, they had thirty-seven kids in that meeting. All right, so that's really a direct benefit from the rec program. Basketball has over fifty kids coming to open gyms right now from the rec program. You know, we've offered some powerlifting opportunities in rec, and powerlifting had their first practice today, and they had over sixty kids there. So we're starting as a district to see the benefits that the rec program has really paid for us, you know? And so just continuing to make sure we work together and and kind of clean it up, I think is really what what we're trying to do. I think now we have people in place that aren't going anywhere. You know, I'm not going anywhere. Toby's not going anywhere. You know, Jeremiah is there. I think that'll make a smooth transition. The last year, year and a half have been a little little rocky because, you know, you had athletic director change, you had a rec director change, two rec director changes, right? So I think the stability now is really kind of starting to pay off for it.
All right, thanks, Chad. So again, tons of positive stuff going on. It's really kind of exciting, you know, as we move into the winter, things start to move inside. And in talking about this model, this is the model, a school district municipality partnership in regards to recreation is is a model that's really growing across the country. A lot of communities like ours, at some point, had to step away from recreation for whatever reason those may be, and you're seeing it kind of growing across the country where school districts are starting to partner with the city and saying, how can we don't chug out and bring recreation back to our kids? So again, good things on at APS. Like I said in that last bullet there, though, you and I have talked, and we would like to here shortly, get a written agreement again between the district and the city, just to outline expectations where we're going to go and the checks and balances that'll be in place to ensure citizens are getting their minds worked. Continuing off recreation, we're going to move into talk a little about partnership that we have with YMCA. YMCA runs adult recreation. They do a little bit of boat. A lot of that is softball at Heritage Park, indoor volleyball, Pioter Center, sand volleyball this summer down at Riverside Park, as well as during the winter times, pickleball at the Pioter Center. They do do a little bit of youth football, youth volleyball, and youth basketball. These take place at the Pioter and at Heritage. They're offset from the district, but this is one thing that leads us to my thoughts, and again, where this meeting kind of came from, because there's some things that I thought needed to be addressed in regards to our rec agreement, simply we don't want to duplicate services, right? And we're starting to see a little bit of that, and that's why this meeting started. In addition, YMCA hitters volleyball, it's in a travel level type of programming. They help, they hold their weekly practices at the Pioter Center. Another thing that YMCA does, it's a really cool program. They run the splash and dash every summer that's down in Bone Pool. It's a British triathlon where kids bike, swim, and run. But on my last bullet there, it says, you know, I think it's time to revisit the the agreement. It's out of date. There's a number of things that we're starting to see where APS has stuff going on, but we also see the YMCA having the same stuff going on, and it makes no sense to duplicate services, right? We want to have, you know, concentrated programming instead of splitting kids. We want kids who go to one program and one entity. So that's kind of where we're at. But additionally, one of the things that I've seen that has popped up within that agreement with YMCA, there isn't a true definition of recreation, recreational sports is. To me, recreational sports, fun and fundamentals, right? We want kids to come out, have a good time. You know, the focus is not on winning. It's it's being good teammates, learning to be coachable, having a good time, but also the financial aspect needs to be extremely well, right? Kids should never have to worry about, I want to go play basketball, I want to play baseball, and worry about a price that puts them and shows them out of those opportunities. With this agreement with the YMCA, they have access to the Pioter Center. And so they run their YMCA hitters. Now, the YMCA hitters is not, in my opinion, recreation. Participate in this program for a half session, it's eight hundred dollars, or do the both winter sessions is sixteen hundred dollars, right? So they use the Pioter Center for free, essentially. And so one of the things now that we're post-two years out of COVID, we're getting lots of organization that reach out to me and say, hey, we see the price that you charge for gym rental, we'll pay full price. We want to pay, you know, we want X amount of hours that sometimes totals out to be two thousand dollars, three thousand dollars, four thousand dollars. However, I can't move forward and allow them to rent the gym simply because currently with the this old agreement, the YMCA has access to it. And again, it's ran by, in particular, this particular program, the hitters, right? Nothing is, YMCA is a great organization, but again, I think there needs to be a definition between what is recreation, what is travel, club, those types of things, right? And those large amounts of money that are put on families and kids to participate in club programming, in my opinion, they need to also pay a price to use our facilities, right? Because every kid in Adrian, a young lady that wants to play hitters can afford sixteen hundred dollars. So that price tag pushes them out.
So I'm going to cut you off here. So sixteen hundred, so eight hundred per session, so sixteen hundred per year play hitters?
And it's also dependent on what their, whether or not you're a Y member, there's a little bit of leeway in regards to that. So some of them may maybe like seven fifty. If people are a Y member, you get a bit of a discount.
So that's not considered. That's AAU, essentially. That's, you know, the other traveling and this and that. So they don't, so, okay. I just wanted to be clear on that, if I understood that right.
Right. And this is where, like I said, this is where, kind of sifting through this and understanding this, that's where we're in the position where we have a, we have a facility in Pioter Center where we could start to generate a little bit of revenue where these outside units want to come. However, we give the first rights to the YMCA. And again, if it was strictly recreation, a low barrier, twenty dollars, thirty dollars to participate, absolutely. They do do some of that, and we allow them to use the gym. It's just those prime, those prime hours, Friday evenings, Saturdays and Sundays, where we have private organizations willing to write us a check for three thousand dollars to, you know, use the gym for X amount of hours versus minutes. We simply can't do that. And so if the commission finds it, you know, that we want to readdress this and revisit this, I really think we should. I think there should be something in place.
Did you have a conversation with the YMCA at all with this?
Yes. Yep. And it's, this is where we've had, we've had it since for a couple of years now, but we've talked about it. And again, it goes back to, there typically is an agreement in place, but in my opinion, it's outdated, and it doesn't address some of these issues. So, you know, after tonight, if you guys feel that it's something that we should look into, if we're happy to do that, or if we don't touch it, we don't touch it. So I believe that.
Did we have an agreement for next number eight years with them?
Yes. So it essentially, it rolls over after three years. If there's nothing changed, it just continues to roll over. However, in the language, it allows us to renegotiate as long as both entities agree that it's fair.
I notice you don't have anything in here about staffing at Bone Pool at the Y, supplies and the wave runners.
Yes.
That. I know this, but I don't. Who currently takes the money for the wave runners? Is that the Y or is that the city?
That's, that's the YMCA. So, so we're kind of distinguishing between the two swimming programs. There's basic recreation offered through the district, that's kind of the winter time. But then you get to kind of a next level up, which is the wave runners, gator, really some talented swimmers. This is kind of, I would call a club-level swimming program, and that's completely operated by the YMCA's, all funds that come into that and go to them. So however they operate out of all.
And how much does that cost to be part of wave runners?
Fifty-five.
Yeah.
It might have done last time.
Then again, it is roughly in that price range, but again, it also hits dependent on whether families are YMCA members and things of that nature. So there are always discounts.
I would just think that you enhance the structure of what you're doing in rec, and that can help with the agreement of the Y. I think it just makes sense that the structure consistency, there's no assumption. This isn't what we're thinking, where we are. That has to be the positive direction for United States.
The APS Scholarship Fund pay for students to swim as well, or is that only for high school? High school.
So that, so that that fund pays for any APS city of Adrian recreation. So there's a swimming.
But not the wave run.
But not, no, because that's a separate.
Because I actually had an issue, not issue last year, but I had a kid on my son's hoopsers team, which is a sixth grader, like for Adrian Public Schools, and a couple of the kids couldn't afford to pay the fee, like seventy-five bucks. I ain't got paid for it, but and so I was, I was going to pay it, and I realized, you know, for these kids, like, oh, wait a minute, like, that's, this is why we subsidize some of that. So I'm going to talk to the former director, actually Jeremiah, and said, hey, you know, again, we give you guys money, but you got to make sure that if the coach, the coach, you need to know that that, uh, that those resources are available for people that need it, you know, and so, and he was really into the job, and he understood it, and then he took care of it, but sometimes, you know, communication on that aspect of kids that, you know, some of the coaches don't know that that's available for some of the kids that play those sports, so.
For sure. Um, moving on, to the second page there, our park fee structure. One of the things now, we're two years kind of post-COVID, we're really seeing a large push of organizations of all types coming out to Heritage Park. I always said it's our, it's our flagship, our flagship of our park system. Heavy usage, not only just individuals and families, different, again, different organizations covering a broad range of things that want to come out and use our park, and that's been a fantastic thing. One of the things that I've kind of noticed over the last year with this is we're in a situation where we don't have really a policy or a park fee that addresses large-scale usage of Heritage Park. So for example, Mr. Howl, you want to come out to Heritage Park, and you want to put on a massive flag football game? You say, I want to use that backfield next to the stubborn center. All you would have to do is pay the the shelter rental fee, right back there, the rental fee, the shelter back there. However, your event encompasses that entire field that crosses over into some of the same trails, right? And so what we're seeing is that folks want to come out, they want to put on these large-scale events. What it's doing, it's putting us in a position to where they're saying, we want to pay the fee, which again, it's minimal. It's sixty-five dollars roughly, however, they can come out and essentially shut the park down. Right? So then what that does is forces any of you in this room, anyone else in the city, or parkgoers that want to go out to the park, they're in a position where they get out and they go out to the park, or they see, you know, whether it be on the city website or Facebook or in the paper, oh, there's an event going on, this part of the park is shut down. So this is something that we we feel, and I talked to Greg about it, I want to come to you about it. Lots of other municipalities around the country have things in place in regards to whether it be acreage, or we say simply, if you want to come out to Heritage Park, you want to take five acres up, there has to be some sort of fee, some sort of policy, because we're running, again, we're running into situations where the event comes out and pays fifty dollars. It could almost shut down the entire park. So whenever we have races, things of that nature, so this summer, we have a MIST, the Michigan mountain biking association, associates come out, they want to come out and use part of the trails. They have five hundred riders. They're weaving in and out. Obviously, they don't use the entire trail system. However, they cross over certain areas, and it creates just simply safety issues, right? So if you were out there with your dogs walking, you go out a certain area, at some point, you're going to have mountain bikers.
But there's no one at the entrance saying, oh, you can't come into that.
No, correct, correct. You can still come into the park.
Shut down. It's just not.
Very limited options for what you can do. Right?
Just because there's so many.
Right. And again, obviously, we encourage it. We want people on our parks and things of that nature. And again, we're seeing the trend of organizations, well, man, there's a lot to offer out of Heritage Park. We really utilize this. But again, for fifty dollars, you can come out and put a serious strain on the parks. That also requires then for me to have staffing out there to overlook that, to clean up afterwards, to 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 man the situation. So again, it's just one of those things where Heritage Park's fantastic, if you want to come out, but again, for literally a minimal price, you're putting a tremendous strain on the park, and you're seriously limiting the access to other residents and citizens. So it's kind of a, an idea and a thought that we really should have some sort of policy in place addressing that, whether that be, you know, rental by acreage or some special rental fee, whether it's a special event and how are we, you know, designate what that that fee may be. That's just something that we've really started to see, I mean, confronted with. In my opinion, it's not fair to other park users and citygoers that want to go out there. There's a event taking up so much of that, the area that you really can't use it to its full capacity, obviously. If they rent it, and we come up with some sort of fee structure, I think it's fair at that point, but there is something in place in regards to that.
Okay, you thought, you know, I just, I know the park inside now.
Yeah.
And would it be a situation where you could maybe divide the park into four quadrants or something? And you could rent quadrants out, because I've experienced what you're talking about. And when those situations happen, there's always a parking issue, especially when you use the field that is next to the stubborn center.
Yeah.
That parking lot fills up immediately. People start to park along the road that's right there. It's, it's a mess. But yeah, maybe if we're designated in four different quadrants or something, you could rent them out that way.
That's something that we're looking at, as we talked about this again, studying and looking at other municipalities and how they do stuff. There is quadrants, there is, you could essentially encapsulate a field, a shelter, or simply go and ask, say, you want to rent this field, it's five acres, and we're charging this much per acre. So there's a variety of options. So yes, that's absolutely something. This is the commission said, let's, let's kind of explore this some more. We can absolutely do.
Yeah. And I just think at the same time, you need to look at the parking situation, too. Somebody goes around a certain, certain area, then they know that you need to keep our cars.
Because you're right, because we have an event come out. So just referring back to the big event we had over the summer with the, you know, mountain bikers, right? Fantastic organization. They really took care of the park, worked well with us. But in order to get five hundred bikers, and they're all youth bikers, there's at least a parent, a grandparent, somebody with them. So you can imagine, while they were using the trails, in fact, we're going back towards the stubborn center, parking and cars was all the way up to the road. And again, putting an effect in and putting a strain on other folks that wanted to come out, park that day, as well as our staff. So but again, there's just currently, there's nothing in place, really kind of addressing that, putting any parameters in place. So that's just an policy that we thought we should, we should explore.
Other than the reason that we have a great venue out there, do you get the feeling that they're coming to Heritage Park because of these structures as well comparatively to other places that they've been in the past?
I would say yes. I would say yes. And for example, you know, I keep referring back to the, the mountain biking association. It was only cost them fifty five dollars, but one day last year, shut the park down, they kinda laughed. And they said, well, that's ridiculous, we'll give you five hundred dollars. So that's just again, our our fee structure is really kind of adjusted to just the shelters. Right? There's nothing else in place that says, you know, I wanna shut the entire park down and have this massive event. There's really nothing in place, it would be renting the two shelters that are out there, you could do that for hundred, ten dollars. Essentially shut the entire park down.
So you have to have somebody to say that somebody can still rent a shelter for a very expensive fee.
Right.
And and differentiate that from the huge.
Correct, that's true. And as we've looked around and kind of looked at this, a lot of other municipalities with big areas like this have some sort of fee structure, policy in place. But really they can make sense, you know, if you all agree to to kind of explore this further, develop something to have.
Does this all had any events related to people in the mall?
We had one small event, um, this summer, an outside organization wanted to come in and do it, um. That's, uh, it's kind of a niche thing, but we're starting to really see it kind of grow, um, and they're fantastic stewards of the park.
They are.
Those those folks take care of it, very constant communication, um, with the other full time, um. Employee out there, well, myself, and so we've had these types of conversations. Um, but that's something that we're seeing that it's, uh, groups are starting to ask and say, hey, what's the cost? Well, we don't actually have a price. We have a shelter rental, we say, oh, you're paying for the shelter rental, but we don't have a price or anything in place to rent this, of course.
Which isn't a bad, I mean, we want people to go out and just use the service. So if I don't wanna go out with, like, twenty friends and go play kids, oh, I wanna rent it.
Right.
Right, but I'm saying. We wanna make sure that people know they can use the services without a cost.
The the difference of whether you're excluded.
Exactly.
You're dropping in, that's.
I think it's a difference too, not just for exclusion, but is the organization charging and or making money for this? To me, that's a, that's a bigger delineation is the mountain bike. Organization, they probably had to pay a couple hundred dollars to enter those races. I I don't know.
That mountain bike event was the busiest day I've ever had out there in seven years ever. And usually the superintendent from the park number ticks me off, he did not that time, that was crazy, crazy, I mean, it was unreal. Water here is, you know, uh.
I'm guessing they made a lot of money of of that event.
Right, that's why they said, oh, you know, fifty five dollars, we'll give you five hundred, that's okay, you you know, they probably probably felt bad for only paying fifty bucks or whatever it was. But, you know, for the shelter fee, but yeah, that's, uh, busy.
I don't know, I think, I just think we need to be conscious of that, if there, if if the organization that wants to rent a shelter right now. Is really doing it to rent it, well, they can make thousands of dollars for their event. That might be a different.
Allow people still around the shelters if they if they want to for a smaller gathering, birthday parties. But if we take it up seventy five acres, that's a whole nother different discussion and piece.
That surely makes it complicated, but like, you're absolutely right, we need to have options to make sure that, I wanna come in just to use a shelter. I just wanna come in and use the shelter, I don't want the shelter on one field, I want the shelter in this space and quadrant might be the.
Absolutely, and this is where we should always say, we we want people in our parks, right? We have tons of positive feedback. Um, every one of our our parks employees loves what they do, they have daily interactions. With our park users, parkgoers, city residents, there's constant conversation, so there's tons of positive feedback, but again. We're just getting into, like Greg, um, said, where organizations wanna come out, exclude folks, but they're charging. Right? So that's where I wanna have this addressed and that's where this is all kind of come from, right? Cause I don't wanna limit. Our city residents, their access to the park, just as there's a group that wants to make money and exclude folks, so that's really where this conversation. Um, all started from, with the situations that we're starting to see like that. Okay, uh, welcome to a song in here, just wanted to give you again, um. Been a year here, just kind of updating some things, we've had a really busy summer, um, the twenty twenty two park product updates, just to give you. Michelle, if you wanna throw up the, uh, PowerPoint. Just have a couple of highlights of some of the things that have gone on this summer. Um, obviously, the Heritage Park repaving, um, that has been a resounding success, um. So many people, that was a huge complaint when I first came on, is how bad the roads were back there, um. Uh, believe it or not, I actually do like to go run a little bit out there, and so even myself driving back there. It's feeling the the pothole, the beat ups on my car, um, so I I shared that sentiment, but there's just a couple of quick pictures, um. It's beautiful, if you haven't been out there, it goes through the entire park, um, all the way back to stomachs back up. And as well down to the disco, of course, um, next slide, Michelle. Um, honestly, Trestle Park, um, made out of wood. And it's finally started to show what's wearing there. On the left side there, if you remember the last year, year and a half, the amphitheater. Was no longer in usage because it was deemed unsafe, um, so this summer, we had a, a. Uh, a company called Timber Craft that specializes in wooden structures, come out and fix that, so. Uh, the amphitheater is now open, obviously, there's a ton of work that we still wanna do to it. That middle slide right there, if you can remember, if you're facing the amphitheater just up to the left, there was all those railroad ties. Um, planer boxes that were sitting there where those railroad ties were literally mush, falling apart. Metal stake starting to hang from them. We've ripped all those out and as you can see in both pictures, um. Nice new treated timber being put in there, um, our park superintendent, Jason, are you there? You turn your volume up, turn your volume up real quick, real quick.
How about now?
Yeah, perfect, yeah, perfect. So, Jason, you wanna highlight, wanna highlight, mention some of the plants and things, the, some of the. Great spaces and things that you wanna do down there.
Yeah, it's amphitheater, before we, um, had to shut it down a couple of years ago, we were doing more rentals, wedding rentals. We did have quite a few people ask if they could bring in some of their own decorations, flowers, ornamentals, and. We definitely allowed that temporarily, so going forward, those areas, we're gonna make those seasonal planting boxes, we'll have some ornamental, woody ornamentals. The open areas for annuals, perennials, but make it a lot more flexible, uh, for rental use down there for people that. Want to use it for weddings or events and try to promote that now that the actual amphitheater is repaired. And I've been in contact with a couple of companies for getting information and quotes on refurbishing a lot of the wood structures at Trestle. There's actually, uh, two, um, structures on the main, uh, trail, Villions itself. That are gonna need some work, uh, some of the deckings, the boards need some work, so that is something going forward, um, potentially in the capital budget for next year. That we could present to the commission some ideas to upgrade, update some of those areas.
Awesome, thank you, Jason, um, Michelle, next slide. Um, here's some more projects, so we did a little trail cleanup, uh, the last couple of months here. So this, uh, the trail over behind, uh, River Terrace and Zizi's, right there on the left hand side, you see that stone? There was at up until about a month ago, there was just nasty brush thorns, um, and really was just an area where trash was collecting. So we cleared that out, um, added some seasonal grasses, stones opened up and yes, you see this area. Um, we ran landscaping, uh, we partnered with Underwoods, they helped us out, but we ran stone and edging all along there. Opened that area up, again, it was just kind of a, a rough area, right? It was just trash collecting, um. Nasty vegetation, thorns, brushels, just just a lot of gross stuff, so we cleared it out. Um, and that sits right on, again, on the backside of the trail there, on the backside. Riverview Terrace and obviously right across from, uh, Zizi's, uh, boring. Next slide. So we put in two new pumps dotted bird ponds, um, that's actually a picture this morning, I took. Credit, I was happy, I was gonna be the ducks, and the photo, I stood there for about two minutes, they were. Working from the east to the west and I'm like, let's just give them time to get across, so, um, we put two brand new pumps and lights down there for ponds. Um, it looked fantastic and obviously, that's much needed in the summer when we're batting out. Right? Stagnant water, it's gonna start to grow, so moving forward, we're pretty happy and excited that all of these pumps will be a big solution. Uh, next slide. Obviously, this splash pad, um, opened up over the summer, um, that was a resounding success. Talking to neighbors, neighbors in the area, kids, families that were down there, I try to get down at least once a week, had good conversations. Um, and folks were so receptive and grateful, um, to the city or for putting that in there, um. What was even more exciting is is that folks took care of it, we had zero issues. Down at the splash pad, it really was an exciting place to be, um. There were a couple of hot Friday afternoons where my staff and stuff, right at the end of the day, jumped out there. Um, and enjoying the ladybug splashing, just like you see that picture there, um, so. What's that?
Good time to dunk a little bit better on this.
Yeah, yeah, again, photo credit, I got that photo. Right there, um, but in the splash pad was huge, huge, it was taken care of, um. Folks from all over the city gave you use it and and again, zero issues, and it's just one of the first steps. Projects that we wanna start doing, um, over on the east side in Jigo Parks, so. Um, going forward, obviously, we're creeping in on budget season here, um, the twenty twenty three forecast. Some things that we're gonna be in the parks department focusing on and working on and bringing to you all. Um, we wanna address all park playground equipment over the summer, we had a, uh. Certified, uh, playground specialist came in, gave us a detailed list, went through every single part with myself and Jason. We identified, um, issues, um, any things that was deemed unsafe, we've already removed out of the park. Now, there's just things that we wanna tighten up going forward, so that's gonna be one of our top priorities. Um, some of the other things that we're gonna be looking forward to, um, we really wanna resurface, uh, the parish has done that, done that, uh, park basketball courts. And what you see up here, this kind of coincides, one of the things that we wanna do. Every summer, the Sean Brown East Side Basketball Camp is a camp that's held for any kids, it's free. Um, they held it this summer, um, I know Sean personally, his family, um, they're from Adrian. Sean grew up on the east side, went to Adrian High School, lives in Florida now, but travels back to Michigan on a fairly regular basis. Very involved in the university community, and over the summer, he reached out to me and said, hey, Jeremiah, I'm here in this position, we're holding the basketball camp, how can you help? So the parks department, we actually had some of our employees that are coaches, so they were there coaching, we brought, uh. A tent, parks direct tent for shade, um, we just did a, a variety of things down there. But one of the things from this that we wanna focus on, you see in that top picture, you see the condition of that basketball court at Parish Park. In my opinion, again, I used to be an athlete, but I'm not anymore, play basketball, that's extremely unsafe at this point, right? You're running up and down, you're jumping. That's how you pull knees out or pull an ankle, um, but again, all fantastic stuff. It's a, it's a free program and in the neighborhoods comes together and, uh, it's it's really great event, so. That's one of the things that you'll be seeing from us, that we would like to do capital project wise, is to address those basketball courts. Michelle? Here's just a cool little video, um, of the younger kids, they were putting them through some warm up, so here's just a cool little video. So this was roughly third grade through high school, so these are the young ones. Something like that, we got some of the older kids over at that park, so it was really a fantastic event, it was super hot that day. Uh, but all in all, it was a great turnout, again. We wanna address these issues, it's unsafe over there, we wanna get over there as soon as possible to take care of that. Um, and just some other things I have on there, uh, and like Jason was saying, we wanna continue to work on the Trestle Park infrastructure, um. That park's made out of wood, it's been every thirty plus years, and so that's one of our focuses, is we've got the amphitheater up. We're working on those, uh, plant boxes, we got that stuff ripped out, but there still is a lot more to do, so you're gonna see that, uh, coming. Um, additionally, the parks might continue to put up lighting, more lighting in the area, bathroom upgrades. And then we also, um, we're gonna start looking at maybe some security gates in some of the parks, um, essentially to kind of help us combat. Vandalism is some of the things that we've really experienced, um, some of our parts, in particular, Island Park. Um, we would like to put security gates, um, at the front of the bridges there to kind of prevent. A lot of, a lot of great stuff going on, um, anytime. Reach out to myself or Jason if you have questions or concerns, so. Are there any further questions? Yes, ma'am.
Uh, it's one thing that you're looking at possibly signage, I know it doesn't deter necessarily, but at least to remind people, cause I know. Um, something that I got a lot of complaints about this summer was just people smoking in the parks and. Around their children and things like that, and they wish there were signs, so they, because people said, well, there's no signs, I can do it here, I.
That's something that I'm gonna bring to you shortly, it's listed on tonight's agenda, but there, there is no smoking ordinance. And we feel that there should be because there are thousands of cigarette butts in the parks, um. And it's impossible for our department to go and pick up every single one, it just, if you, we force them to do that, nothing we can do. Because there are thousands, and so we try to blow, we try to raid, we try to get them up, but that is a serious problem. That will be addressed and that will be something that.
I think there, there is a, uh, no smoking on city property, cause remember Jeff Rising brought that back when he was in the city commission years ago. So maybe, I don't know if you guys can look at that and see if that's, I don't know if that's applicable to parks compared to, or else it was just buildings or. Downtown, okay, okay.
It'd be better to have ordinance, it's our property at the end of the day, we set whatever park rules we wanna set, right?
But without security, you can create all the rules you want.
Right.
Right.
Of course, and I would, I would like to be able to see the rest of them, at Trestle Park, open a brand new day, have security coming.
Well, that's the thing they do.
Yeah.
That that's the thing, it's an ongoing thing, so that's where, you know, and not just, you know, the bathrooms, but. Park itself, the structures, um, themselves are getting vandalized, so that's one of the things, I I know it's not gonna fix everything. But we feel like that's a good, uh, a good first step in regards to island parks is to, you know, build a security gate that. Um, and have it closed if there are, cause myself, sometimes I will drive through some periods to see what's going on, there'll be ten cars down the.
I know that, um, one of the APS elementary schools put in some sensory, uh, playground equipment this summer. Um, is it possible to, when you're looking at playground equipment, um, across our city, is it possible to put some of those? Particular equipment upgrades into some of the parks so that, um. It's not such a long haul for some kids to.
Absolutely. I think part of it is, is, is when, you know, we're gonna get budget time, is that we need to talk amongst ourselves and realize what, you know, cause I I I view a city as. You know, how do you get people to live in your city, move here, is that, you know, with the public safety first, school second. And then quality of life, things like parks, and I think that, you know, I didn't get many emails this year, but in years past, when it comes to the parks, I used to do a lot. When it comes to broken playground equipment and whatnot, and that's, you know, kind of embarrassing for us to to be able to have, not have playground equipment that's safe and and and. And, you know, for our citizens and our kids, um, so I think that we need to talk about, once, you know, he comes into the budget, like, all right, what 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 do you wanna do about it? You know, do you want, do you wanna make some significant capital investments, because having a s- awesome park system, you're a parks guy, lad, you know, I mean, it's, it's so. Important for, uh, just for city to grow and 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 to attract people to live here, um, so. Again, we always ask things what he needs and and we're always pretty, you know, willing to give him the same with Eric, but now it's time to look at the. Quality of life component of it. quality of life component of it and see what we can do to help, you know.
I'm glad we're having the conversation. I was down in Ohio today. And, you know, saw things down there that we should definitely have here.
Right. Because, you know, the way we're positioned financially, it's like we should not have a bunch of playground equipment that's unsafe for our kids. That's, that's not stop. I don't do that as being responsible. I mean, I could, we're, we're, kind of money conscious, that'd be different, you know, but we don't. So I'm, I'm glad this took place tonight and a lot of good things go on.
I know we're running out of time, but we're still looking at a pool of pickleball courts, right?
Pickleball, yes. For bid right after the first year, right now, we say to set it out, because everyone, contractor we've talked to will not hold a price with the unstable market. I mean, we're talking almost six to eight months out and they're like, not a chance. So right after the first year, we will be setting that out. In regards to, I'm sorry. Cool. Just Friday night, I just received the final renderings from Councilman Hunsacker, so I'll be in Greg in the next couple of days. To set a presentation for some public input, a public presentation by that company. And then from there, under the advisement of you all, we'll start to take the next steps.
I like what you did tonight. I was wondering, people, I don't know, we asked for an update. My question is, so we have recreation taking place especially for students from APS and students and adults from the YMCA. Do you ever see in your plan to have any kind of programs from the city ourselves? Is there a, is there a need? Is there anything that's missing? Is there a gap that the city needs to fill in regards to rep programs? Are we going to offer? I did a quick rundown of all the different places in town or in the area that offer what I would call rep programs. And that's the ACA. The different colleges, they offer different things, the ISB offers that kind of and sometimes rep programs, I heard the class, that kind of stuff. So have you done like a review of what's being offered in the area and injured something that we used to offer in our rep programs and maybe we should bring back or is there something new that we as the city should be offering for recreation that's not currently being fulfilled by other agencies?
Good question. So really kind of the, the, one of the reasons that when you look at recreation, I'll take Tecumseh for example. A lot of what you see offered adult rec wise on the sheet offered by the YMCA is adult co-ed softball, co-ed volleyball in the summer. As well as the winter time, those are a few of the things that are held and created that we have simply because we have the pewter center to do that. So you can hold volleyball, but that's essentially it. Make it do survival, same ball, of course. Without us having this big community center, like you see a lot of cities in our burnt lands in different places like that, they have this, these massive community centers, recreation centers where they're allowed to hold all sorts of different type of programming. We're in the position now where that's why the current model that we have now makes so much sense for the school district. They can hold everything there. The students are there. I have nowhere to put anybody. So that's why this model really works. Asking if there's other programs. It's dependent on if people requested it. And it's one of those things, we don't have a recreation staff to, to run into that. So it's one of those things where if residents and came to us and said, we really feel strongly about this, we could explore it and look into it. And if you guys approved it, then of course we would start to offer these things. But again, we don't have the staff. We don't have a recreation staff. We have a, a park staff that is stretched extremely thin. So even to consider adding some sort of recreation ran by the city. You'd have to hire more people. So.
Yeah, when they cut it, Commissioner Roberts, they, you know, the city was losing three hundred thousand dollars a year. And just that department alone. So it's, it's one of those things where, like, no. I, I said, when we got, when we did, you know, I'm like, we cut a check for thirty thousand. We have recreation. So that's a good deal for us. No.
But we're not actually operating recreation. We're kind of managing. We own the, we own the stock. But we're not actually offering the program.
Right. But we have a seat at the table though. That, that's one, one thing I wanted to have a seat at the table. When we're going to cut a check, we've got to have either he or, or whoever in the past, you know, have a seat at the table when it comes to the operational side of it. Because.
That's one thing I want to be sure we do with both, revisiting both of them, to make sure that we have that.
Yep.
The defined role and choosing what program.
I think more, more of a, a universal look at all of the rep programs going on that are offered on city property. And I don't know if that's putting that information on our calendar, on the city website. Or because if you look at our, I, I put the love this weekend at our, our rec website. You would think that there are no recreation activities happening through, you know, the city or really with the city. You have to really delve into our website to look at that. And I don't want new people to think that. There has to be a way where we can bring in all of these things that are happening, literally, you know, the ISB, you know, everything that is happening, the ACA, all of them, Sam Buford. All those things that are going on to show the events, the activity, the student and adult recreation opportunities in the areas, whether we're, because we're not offering any of them, but that doesn't mean that we can't. We don't have a seat at the table in.
Collaboration has come a long way in the last twenty years. Organizations collaborating together. So maybe it's that we have a link on our Facebook page or something, social media wise to, or our page, our webpage, sorry. To those organizations. So if someone is interested in arts, they're connected to the ACA, or if someone is interested in other things that they're connected, I don't know.
We do have a link to them, but it's not real clear that, that the city is a part of the YMCA's programming. It's not clear that the city is a part of APS's program.
Right.
That, that's what I'm saying. So we, we, we helped create this and we are helping to fund this. But we as the city of Adrian get no recognition for that unless they come to meetings. Does that make sense?
Yeah, giving clarification, as, as was mentioned before, might very well lead to the very thing that you're mentioning. That may be the possibility. That might be the next step. Kind of organizational things, the structure that they're looking at with both YMCA and the city could very well lead to the very thing that you, a, a, a full, complete package of, of information.
Yeah.
We're not, yeah, we're not needing some of these. If things were facilitating, we're, we're part of the, the space, we're part of the, we're not managing people as much as we're giving the opportunity.
Which isn't a bad thing. It is what we want. And we don't want to do services. But we do want to promote it and we do. I'm sorry. We do want to get credit for it as a city.
I think we're saying that the citizen comes up, Commissioner Roberts says downtown, says, you guys, you guys don't offer anything for recreation. She's probably thinking, yeah, we do. And then so people don't know that we, that we're a part of that, you know, when it comes to the collaboration between the three entities. Gotcha.
And that's where discussing with that too, having the written agreement that we need to test. We can set those solid expectations with that and discussions that I've had with Chad recently that we need to promote the steel or let it be well known to anybody in the city that if you are interested in recreation, there is recreation available. So those discussions have happened and we're pushing on them. And again, they're, they're on more a hundred percent, but I think that's what'll help us tremendously is having this written agreement. Here's the expectations. Let's go forward and make that. So.
And we, and we can, we can pay attention to our own message. We do have to wrap it up. I have one quick question for you before we do public comment. That our custom to give the employees a half day for Thanksgiving. We're gonna do that. And we do it every year by resolution. We've never made it permanent. Question number one, do you want to do it this year? Question number two, do you want to make it a permanent thing? Because you don't have to do it like this. Either way, we gotta, we're gonna address it. Appreciate your guidance in that regard. We have tonight, if you would.
I need to make it permanent.
Yes.
It's a long time to leave something.
Well, I don't, you know.
All right. That may offer a nice view for public comment.
All right. At this time, we will open up public comment inside the chambers first. Just reiterate, there's a three minute time limit. And I got it. And, yeah, so state your name and address. Thank you.
I just have one thing. Ashley, about those. But I just wanted to bring up one thing that popped in my head that I know Kalamazoo had gotten a grant for a fitness court that they put next to. Yeah, but they put next to the playground. So it's free fitness, whole body fitness equipment, kinetic exercise.
So Kalamazoo's?
Yeah, Kalamazoo, they got a grant. And it's, it was just that it's a free full body workout that people that can't afford to have a gym membership or go drive all the way up to the Y, something like that, I think would be fantastic. I know we used to have something by Alexander and that little park tree, I go spring breath and all the equipment sitting there in the bus garage now. But what they saw, like, maybe, I was excited. Like, I would go and use that while my kids are.
What do you mention? As I said, an hour long meeting, saying that that group is trying to start the process to look at. Because it's offered what Ashley's talking about, fitness courts around the country. They're putting over the National Fitness Organization. It's fitness in your parks, all body weight movement stuff, accessible for everybody. It's also, they've entered into a three year agreement with Trinity Health, our healthcare provider in the city. So I sat in a meeting today. Looking to start that process and figuring out the grant application process as well. So.
Hearing no more public comment in the chambers, we will now open it up to Zoom. Just reiterate, there's a three minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and address. Hearing no public comments, may I get a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. We will begin our meeting out there at seven ten. I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for November seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please. Present.
Mr. Help.
Present.
Mr. Roberts.
Present.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Castleberry. Mr. Gauss.
Present.
All commission members present.
May I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Strayer and Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Halt.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Consent agenda adopted by unanimous vote.
Under our regular agenda, under ordinances, ordinance number twenty-two dash zero one zero is a second reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend the City of Adrian zoning ordinance. Article two definitions, section two point four six daycare facilities. May I get a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Move to adapt the ordinance.
Are there any public comments to this ordinance? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Halt.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted by unanimous vote.
Ordinance number twenty-two dash zero eleven is a second reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend the City of Adrian zoning ordinance. Article seventeen, WH Warehouse Wholesale District. May I get a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved. Support.
Are there any public comments in relation to this ordinance? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Miller with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Halt.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted by unanimous vote.
Moving on to ordinance number twenty-two dash zero twelve. This is a first reading and consideration of an ordinance to amend the City of Adrian Code, Chapter two. Administration, Article twelve, Boards and Commissions, Division three, Planning Commission, Section two dash four five two, membership. This is a first reading only. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution R twenty-two dash zero seventy-four is from administration. It is a resolution to rescind the state of emergency declaration for Riverview Terrace. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move, adopt the resolution?
Support.
Are there any public comments in relation to this resolution? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Halt with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Halt.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
It is now time for a public comment. We will begin inside the city chambers first, and then we will open it up to the Zoom participants. Just to reiterate, there is a three minute time limit which you will see on the screen. And for the record, please state your name and address. We will begin in chambers first.
Hello, I'm Judge Todd Morgan. Yes, I am on the ballot tomorrow. I know I've been before this.
Can you just say where you're from? You don't have to say your exact address because I know you're.
Clinton, Michigan.
Thank you.
Thank you. And as stated, I am on the ballot. So I just wanted to come remind everyone, please vote. Obviously, I'm hoping that you'll consider voting for me. However, whatever you're voting for, please vote. Your vote most certainly does matter. I am the judge. I am hoping to remain the judge. I have a varied background. As I stated, I've been here before and I know most of you have heard my background. I am a veteran. I worked in a mental health hospital prison. I earned an MBA. I worked as a financial analyst. I earned a hundred percent scholarship to law school and earned my Juris Doctor degree while working full time with a family, magna cum laude. I also try to give back to the community. I have been on the Village of Clinton's board. I have been on the board for Habitat for Humanity, for Housing Help in Lenawee. I am still on the board for the Salvation Army. I was a substitute teacher. I try to give back. And I believe that does make me a better judge. I have been an attorney since two thousand and ten, most of that time as a solo practitioner. Since February of two thousand and twenty, I was hired as a, a public defender in district court. So I have a lot of experience in district court. And then, as stated, I am currently the judge. I took the position when Judge Poor retired. I applied, a number of other people applied. I was sworn in April eleventh at nine thirty in the morning and at ten o'clock I had a docket. And I will be the judge until at least December thirty first and hopefully with help beyond that. I do have a Facebook page. If anybody has any questions for me, Judge Todd M. Morgan, you may, most certainly can message me and I will reply. I do have a Facebook page, if anybody has any questions for me, Judge Todd M. Morgan, you may, most certainly can message me and I will reply. And I hope everyone, either if you haven't voted absentee, then please make sure you vote tomorrow. And if anybody has any questions, I'm more than willing to answer. Hearing none, I wish everyone the best, and this is the last day before the election, so I am trying to make as many board meetings as possible. So I am going to run out, and I hope nobody will take offense to that, thank you all, and have a wonderful day.
Hello, Joaquin Ramos, four twenty-two South Winter Street, I know, what would it be a meeting if you didn't hear from me? So here I am reminding you that come Friday, a second Friday, we will be at the library, would of course, I'd like to see anybody out there and we'll. Have our normal event as much as we can indoors, and we're pretty excited. So hope to see you all there, and then of course, as already stated, I'm sure at least one of you had in mind to mention as well, don't forget to vote. I mean, I vote absentee, but don't forget to vote, whether it's in person, a little late privacy now, but make sure to vote, whoever you vote for, of course, I have my preferences. That I'd be happy to ramble about, but make sure you vote, so that your voice matters, thank you for your time.
Hello, Ashley, Kowasus Frank, City of Adrian resident. I'm happier today, I appreciate all of you. Since the commission has started to show interest in making an effort to heal the relationship between the city and the community. I have decided to treat public comment as couple counseling from, for the time being. Today, instead of critiques, I bring you some suggestions from the community for places to focus your efforts moving forward. Make information accessible, the website is, is pretty easy to click and find your way through. The YouTube videos of these meetings are invaluable, and we commend you for continuing to use technology as a resource. Something that could take that a step further would be timestamps for the topics mentioned in the descriptions of the videos. It saves time, makes people more likely to watch it, if they can skip directly to the issues that they're looking for. I do it when I share the videos on Facebook, I just make a note when the topic changes and what that time is, so people can. Look at it and they're not seeing a two hour video they have to sit through. Find ways to publicly stand against white supremacy, all forms of discrimination are rooted in white supremacy and colonization. It's not enough to recognize marginalized communities with proclamations, if we aren't also backing those actions up. Then they're just words on paper, so I'm going to continue to remind us to work towards that, the HRC is an amazing resource. That they can help find ways, if one way doesn't work or an existing suggestion doesn't work, there, there are other ways that they will be glad to help you. Move towards being a trauma informed city. There are many resources available in our community that would leap at the opportunity to work with the city employees and elected officials. To become more aware of how trauma affects individuals, outcomes, and the community as a whole. As well as how decisions made in this room can impact those dealing with trauma currently. This is, has been something brought up to the HRC frequently, we've talked about it for years and years, I mean, recently you, the HRC had. Trauma training that they provided, so if maybe partnership with the city, you could expand that to, to incoming employees having at least. Trauma, if not trauma informed, trauma aware, just how. The things the city does, or interactions you have with people, the Parks and Recreation Department having interactions with our homeless population, for example. That's a great spot to start focusing some trauma informed trainings. Yeah, and just keep moving forward, I'm really excited, and I'm, I'm feeling positive tonight.
We will now open public comment up to those on Zoom. For the record, please state your name and address, and you will see the time on your screen.
Hello.
We can hear you, Jim.
Okay, thank you, well, again, thank you very much for allowing me the couple minutes I have, this is really for. A, a thank you list. Obviously, in, in, this is my time of year that I enjoy very much, and. Comstock Christmas Road Walk is, is coming along extremely well, farther ahead than we've been at this point. Started, the largest number of trees we've had since we started nine years ago. But the, I really want to thank mayor and the commission, city administrator. And Eric Kelly and DPW, and Jeremiah Davies and Parks and, and Forestry. You know, with, without, without the city employees' help in, in pulling this together, it just wouldn't happen, and it. Always is a joy for me each year. Work with all of, you know, your departments that I just mentioned, that. Really come together and pull off an event that has come a, a very, very nice tradition. And often they just don't get the recognition that they deserve, and that's why I wanted to come on tonight. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Commissioner Administrator. Your employees go above and beyond. In, in making sure that we pull this off in an event that everyone enjoys and something that we can. So with that, I'll take my, my time short and just say thank you very much. We look forward to a wonderful lighting ceremony. Between Michelle and, and getting some things ready and a few other things, we have some surprises for you on December second, but we'll leave those for December second. Thank you very much, and all have, if I don't talk to you, you all have a very happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Hearing no more public comment, are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Castleberry.
Thank you. My job outside the commission is an advocate for some of the most vulnerable populations in our community. I balance, I balance many passions, most currently I work to prevent and end homelessness. I have worked as an anti-human trafficking advocate, a crime victim advocate, and a child forensic interviewer, and I'm also a combat veteran. I took, I about a year and a half ago, I took the job at Share the Warmth of Lenawee, thinking I've collected many resources throughout my career and I should be. Able to easily connect people to those said resources, and I was wrong about anything being easy. This is hands down one of the most difficult jobs I've ever had. The reality of what I see every day is more than sixty different life stories playing out at the shelter in which I work. There are people that battle substance use and cry in frustration at their struggle for sobriety and the disappointment and torture with relapse. It is persons that combat serious mental health disorders, traverse an overtaxed system. Almost never get the care that they need and try to thrive, receiving the bare minimum. It is people that have struggled through a life of trauma and never learned that their behaviors were in fact protective measures, learned, learned as a means of survival. The lack of mental health care supports and inadequacy of agency accountability creates dire circumstances in our community. Share the Warmth of Lenawee has been a gift to me, it has given me my life's greatest challenge, as well as some of its greatest rewards. We have served, served guests in there from the ages eighteen to ninety-two and beyond. We bring them into shelter afraid, scared, angry, frustrated, and juggling great loss, it is heartbreaking in those moments. The obvious importance of Share the Warmth is shelter, the significant importance of Share the Warmth is humanity. One person telling another, I got you, someone saying, I know you had a bad, bad day, but tomorrow we are going to try again and I will sit with you. It is staff, it is volunteers, and often other guests being courageously empathetic with others. Something I'm often heard saying is it's not about you, you need to step out of your personal box and understand the why. You can't do that sitting in a place of sympathy and judgment, you need to get vulnerable and empathy takes a lot of courage. November is Homeless Awareness Month. I'd like to thank the City of Adrian for their work this year during the Riverview Terrace crisis and beyond. Chief Massengill, who is receiving the Norm Odell Courage to Care Award for going above and beyond to help our community, community members without shelter or housing. He gets that award tomorrow, and the Adrian Fire Department as well. Chief Emmerich and the Adrian Police Department, the Department of Public Works, as well as the City Parks and Rec Department. Every one of you, I have seen every one of you go out of your way to help. The guests that stay in my shelter, you are all keen stewards of what it means to help some of our most vulnerable populations. I keep two quotes on the wall in my office, one is the prayer of Saint Francis, and a Steve Jobs quote titled, Here's to the crazy ones. I pray every day that I bring peace, love, hope, joy, and understanding to those I serve. I am also encouraged that the round pegs in the square holes, the ones who see things differently, are the ones that change things. They push humanity forward, while some may see that it's crazy, there is actual genius there. Because the ones that think they can change the world are the ones that do. So I just want to say thank you to the community at large in the City of Adrian for all of the work, support, donations, etc. that they did. Gave to our unhoused and unsheltered community members this summer, it was something absolutely fantastic to see and witness. Thank you.
Commissioner Halt.
I just want to give, be brief and give some good lucks tomorrow, and also, obviously tomorrow is voting day, but. Commissioner Gauss is on the ballot tomorrow, and no matter what happens, I think that we're going to be seeing a lot of him regardless, if he wins or not, but. You know, my friend Terry Collins, Commissioner Collins on the west side of Adrian, he's also up for reelection, again, two guys that have integrity and. Honest, and, 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 and in my opinion are good commissioners, and I'm not easy to please when it comes to who I support, so I wish you both the best of luck. And we'll see you by eight o'clock, what happens?
And I promised somebody on Zoom earlier tonight that we'll be working at the election polls to get out and vote tomorrow. From seven AM to eight PM at the Lenawee County Fairgrounds, I said I would make sure and tell everybody what the time was and make sure if you have not done your absentee ballot. That you do get out and vote tomorrow, every vote does matter, thank you. May I get a motion to adjourn? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Miller, all in favor say aye.